I'd like to call this meeting of the Paradise Town Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we have the invocation presented to us by Councilmember Tryon.
Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this time that I have had on this council. It has been a great experience. Please continue to bless our law enforcement, our council members to make good decisions on behalf of the town, and continue to bless this town of Paradise. Amen. Thank you so much.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Crowder.
Here.
Councilmember Colleton.
Here.
Councilmember Tryon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boland.
Here.
And Mayor LaSalle.
Here. Move on to item 1E, the approved minutes from the November 12th special and regular town council meeting. Any...
So moved.
Moved in second? Move in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's approved.
Roll call vote for Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Crowder.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor LaSalle.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 1F, the year in review. I have to apologize to all of you out there already. It's fairly lengthy that I'm going to be reading it. I apologize, but we have done a lot this year. So the state of the town is good. And let me list all the good things that have gone on because of the wonderful staff we have and the people that have helped us get to this point. So it's truly an honor to come before you, as your mayor, reflecting on our shared journey through resilience and recovery. As we approach the end of 2024, it's remarkable to see how far we have come and how much progress we have made. We made this together. While the road to recovery has not always been easy, in fact, tonight you'll see one of the bumps in the road. Your unwavering commitment to rebuilding, rebuilding, and rebuilding, again, has allowed us to reach new milestones that reflect our strength as a community. Let's begin the cornerstone of our recovery, rebuilding, and discuss that. As of December, we've seen significant progress in our housing development efforts. There have been 3,417 single-family applications, of which 2,579 certificates of occupancy have been issued. Those are homes that people have been able to move into. Of those homes rebuilt, 72% are stick-built, 28 are manufactured homes, demonstrating our diverse approach to restoring our housing infrastructure. In addition, we received 820 multifamily unit applications to date, of which 571 multifamily certificates of occupancy have been granted, further expanding our housing stock. With our population is currently approximately 11,000. We're still waiting for the full numbers to come in, but we'll get that... We're at about 40% of our pre-fire numbers. We're steadily gaining momentum, and we're on a path towards future growth and revitalization. There are currently are plans that have been submitted to build approximately 800 housing units. That's 800 single-family, multifamily apartments and such that are in the pipeline that will be built over the next couple of years. This is rebuilding the foundation of our community. A critical aspect of recovery is the ongoing underground of utilities. You've all have seen the red cones and the trucks, and you've been stopped for longer than you'd like. As part of our effort to reduce the risk of future disasters and make our town safer, we're on track to complete the undergrounding of the utilities by 2025. As of now, PG&E has completed 83% of their work, Comcast 60%, the water utility progresses at 68%, and telecommunications at 50%. This will make our community much more resilient and protect us from the effects of the devastating wildfires that we've experienced in the past. Also, our commitment to safety is reflected in the completion of 21 emergency warning sirens that are now fully operational. These sirens will alert our community in the event of an emergency, giving residents more time to respond. We have also made great strides in our efforts to reduce the wildfire risk that remains a concern for all of us. Through enhanced redevelopment enforcement, we've achieved a 95% compliance rate, the highest town has ever received. This significantly reduced the risk of fire in our community. Moreover, we have moved forward with the abatement actions for chronic violators, making our town even safer and more resilient. I'm pleased to announce that the town has been awarded funds for three key recovery projects that we applied for back in 2019. First off is category four tree removal. In just six weeks, we'll be getting removing about 10,000 trees that pose a hazard to our community. In addition, we also have the residential ignition resistance rehabilitation. Try saying that four times fast. This initiative will provide funding for about 100 homes that survived the fire to enhance their fire resistance, helping to protect our residents and also protect the houses that are next to them. And finally, we have a fuels reduction. We will acquire equipment and hire additional personnel to expand our fuel reduction activities in the public right-of-ways, further reducing our fire risks across the town. We have a vibrant and thriving future. We've made great strides in other areas as well. The first multifamily housing project funded by the Community Development Block grant disaster recovery was completed and is now leasing up. It offers 43 affordable units to our residents. This is just the beginning of our efforts to provide safe, affordable housing to all who call Paradise home. In addition, Town Councilmembers Steve Crowder and Rose Tryon, working with the town staff that have traveled to Washington DC, meeting with the lawmakers... Sorry. To advocate for funding and policies that will support a recovery. These efforts have yielded real results and will continue to be crucial as we push for resources that will help us rebuild faster and more effectively. I'm very pleased to report that the US Senate passed HR 5863, the Federal Disaster Tax Relief Act, and that legislation included Congressman Doug Lamalfa's bill, HR 4970, which will exempt wildfire relief payments from federal income tax. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Rose. Here, here, right? Yes, indeed. Now, Councilmember Crowder was instrumental in pushing hard on that one. He made multiple trips to lobby for our town residents to get this passed, taking the red-eye flight out and go into a meeting as soon as he got off the airplane. So again, thank you, Steve, for all that you've done for that. I'm not done yet. Just a few more good things to talk about, folks. We've also been working diligently to address the insurance availability and affordability. Thanks to a meeting with the California Insurance Commissioner, Laura, we are seeing positive changes on the horizon, changes that were directly influenced by your town council's advocacy. An insurance company has visited Paradise on several occasions, and they have announced they have a goal to ensure 240 newly-built wildfire-prepared homes and move those homes off the California fare plane. 240, that's just the beginning. There are about three other insurance companies have indicated they're interested in coming back. They want to see what we've done. We are considered the leading town in the nation for wildfire fire prevention, so we're doing it right, and the insurance companies are starting to see that. Now, it took us a number of years to get in this hole. It's going to take us a while to get out, so it's not going to happen overnight, but it's already beginning. There's a new initiative this year also, the Strategic Healthcare Recovery Plan, which will ensure that we have the healthcare services our growing committee needs both now and in the future. And let's not forget the work we're doing to enhance and protect our downtown area. The town council moved forward on zoning changes to encourage appropriate development and protect the walkability that will make Paradise special. A strategic downtown revitalization plan is underway, with short-term actions already being taken to breathe new life into this important area. Our goal is to create a vibrant downtown that will serve as the heart of our community for generations to come. This year, we reached a milestone recovery with the restoration of 24-hour, seven-day-a-week dispatch services in the Paradise Police Department. Our local dispatch team, using their firsthand knowledge of the community and services, are key to effective response. Our police department is now fully staffed with all the appropriate positions in full. Finally, our long-awaited expansion and improvement of the animal shelter under the police department is under construction and will be open in 2025. While we've accomplished a great deal, we know there's a significant amount of work ahead. More cones on the roads, folks. As we look forward to the future, we remain focused on creating a town that is not just rebuilt, but stronger, more resilient, and more connected. Each and every one of you plays a vital role in our collective success, and it's your dedication that fuels our continued progress. In closing, I want to thank our dedicated staff, my fellow members on your town council, and all of you, our resilient residents, for the work you've done, the progress we've made, and the strength we've shown through it all. Together, we are rebuilding Paradise, one step, one home, one business, one community at a time. Thank you, and let's continue moving forward with the hope, optimism, and determination may the future be bright for Paradise. Thank you. Now I have mixed feelings. Have to recognize a departing council member who has been a good friend of mine for the two years I've been on the council, and she's departing, so we'd like to recognize Councilmember Rose Tryon with a proclamation, and I need to read it if I can. I'm sorry. Whereas, Rose Tryon has faithfully served the town of Paradise as a council member, beginning her term on December 8th, 2020, and concluding it on tonight, December 10th, 2024. And whereas, Rose Tryon served as a mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, from December 13th, 2022 through December 12th, 2023. And whereas, Rose Tryon represented Paradise on the Butte County Air Quality Management District Governing Board, Butte County Association of Governments, the Solid Waste Committee, and the Butte County Fire Safe Council. And whereas, Rose Tryon has tirelessly advocated for Paradise residents participating in Washington DC advocacy trips in 2023 and 2024. And whereas, Rose has played a pivotal role in Paradise recovery and rebuilding efforts, particularly following the devastation of the campfire, actively working to ensure that Paradise remains a place of hope, strength, and opportunity for all. And whereas, Rose's dedication has extended far beyond her official duties as she continually seeks to inspire and support those around her, embodying the true spirit of service and compassion. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Paradise recognizes her position of positive and lasting impact on the Town of Paradise and wishes her continued success and fulfillment in all future endeavors. Now, therefore, I, Ronald LaSalle, Mayor of the Town of Paradise, proudly honors Councilmember Rose Tryon for her extraordinary contributions, leadership, and devotion to the committee and witness whereof. I have hereto set my hand and cause the official seal of the Town of Paradise to be affixed hereto on this 10th day of December, 2024. Rose, thank you. Let us move on to item 1H.
Mayor LaSalle, we actually have a couple more recognitions.
My apologies. I didn't know that. Please.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Braden Pisani. I'm here today on behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher and now former Senator Brian Dolly to present Rose a recognition, a resolution from the Assemblymen and the Senator. Ron covered a lot of the whereas language, so I just want to read a small section of it. You know, whereas, as a member of the Town of Paradise Town Council, Rose Tryon has provided effective leadership, and throughout her hard work and unwavering commitment to the town and the people who live there, she has compiled an impressive record of career and civic achievements, one that has earned her the admiration and respect of those who have had the privilege of associating with her. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Assemblymember James Gallagher and Senator Brian Dolly, that they take great pleasure in commending the honorable Rose Tryon for the leadership she's provided as a member of the Paradise Town Council, applaud her for her exemplary record of achievements in community service, and express their sincere best wishes for continued success in years to come. And Rose, in my time working with you and your time on the town council and as a community member at large in the various positions and roles of advocacy that you hold, both for the Town of Paradise and the North State at large, I wanted to thank you for your service. It's been invaluable, and congratulate you on your retirement from town council, but I know your work doesn't stop here, so I'm sure I'll keep seeing you around, and I thank you for that.
All right, just to continue on getting this ball rolling, my name is Tasha Weaver. I'm actually with Senator Megan Dally's office. It is a pleasure to see you, Rose, this evening. I've had the honor of meeting you, especially with your involvement in the Agriculture for Women, and I have to say, just in my little interactions I've had, you are just a blessing to this community, a blessing to all that you meet, because you truly care, and that's something that we need. We need more of you, we need more of the lovely individuals that are sitting on this council, and more of communities like this. Obviously, they care. They cared to see you here today. So to get things moving along, on behalf of actually Gallagher's office as well as Senator Megan Dally's office, we would like to present you a certificate of recognition honoring your years of service to the community. So thank you.
I don't have to lean over for the mic, so... Rose, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been an honor to know you and get to know you. I appreciate everything that you have done for this town, and I think a lot of people don't realize what all of you sacrificed to be up there. You know, time away from family, friends. It's just not... And you don't get a lot of praise. You get a lot of headaches, but really, you have done so much for this town, and as said before, the agricultural world that I hope to see you in in the future, just like Braden, I know our paths will cross again. And when you come to town, you're going to have to call me for coffee. But on behalf of Congressman Lamalfa, we would like to present you with a certificate of congressional recognition, and thank you for your four years of service.
Are there anybody out there with another plaque for her? Okay. Now move on to item 1H, citizen recognition by the Paradise Police Command Staff.
Good evening, council. Thank you for giving us a few moments to keep the recognition rolling tonight. As you know, our police officers take an oath to serve our community, uphold the law, and sometimes are faced with challenges and things that, you know, they never know until they step into it. And twice this year, we had a couple instances, once on May 5th of 2024, Officer Cooper, now Sergeant Cooper, made a traffic stop on Skyway, and the driver immediately became combative with him. Officer Cooper ended up on his back, on the ground. They were fighting, and there was a citizen at the 76 station that saw the opportunity to take action, to come over and help the officer. And I'm going to read what we have on this plaque form here. So for selfless courage and unwavering support during the apprehension of a physically resistive subject on May 5th, 2024, Garrett King demonstrated extraordinary bravery and deep commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. In the face of danger, he courageously assisted law enforcement officers, providing critical support when it was needed most. Garrett's quick thinking, compassion, and willingness to act in the time of crisis embody the spirit of community and partnership that strengthens us all. We are deeply grateful for your heroic actions and your dedication to making our community safer. So Garrett, if you can come up, and Officer Cooper, I'd like to present you with this award. Did he make it? He may not have made it tonight, but we'll make sure that we get this done. For those of you that don't know, this is Officer Cooper, and he's good at doing traffic enforcement on Skyway, so watch out. So next up, just recently here, October 26th, there was a vehicle collision on Skyway near Birch. The occupants of that vehicle were heavily intoxicated. They decided to flee the scene, and our officers quickly located them in a nearby parking lot. And we had another citizen that saw the opportunity to help our officers as they were fighting with two combative subjects that were refusing to get out of the car, reaching in their waistband, grabbing at bags and such in the car, which, as you all know, is a very dangerous situation for our officers. So again, I want to recognize and honor Robert Mack for his selfless courage and unwavering support during that incident. He demonstrated extraordinary bravery and a deep commitment to the safety of our officers as well. In the face of danger, he courageously assisted our law enforcement officers and provided that critical support when it was needed most. His quick thinking, compassion, and willingness to act in the time of crisis also embody the spirit of our community and the partnership that strengthens us all. So we're deeply grateful for your heroic actions and dedication to helping us make our community safer. So Robert, if you can come up, I'd like to present you with this award. That's right. And Kevin Tuck just happened to be the officer in charge that day, dealing with part of the accident, and Officer Archuleta was one of the officers that was in the fight with these individuals, and so they're here showing their support as well. And as I mentioned, you know, we sign up for a dangerous job, we know that, but oftentimes we're faced with situations where we're fighting with people, sometimes being overtaken. Most people pull their cell phones out, but you did what was right, and we appreciate you very much. Okay, I have one more. Officer Diaz, can you come up and join me, please? So many of you know Officer Diaz. He's been with the police department for a few months. He has several years of law enforcement experience. He's been a great addition to our team, really hit the ground running. And again, mentioning we never know what the next call for service is, I'm going to read why we're here tonight to recognize him with the life-saving award. So for exceptional courage and swift action during a medical emergency on September 24th of this year, Officer Diaz responded with extraordinary professionalism and urgency to a life-threatening medical emergency. Through quick, decisive action, including the administration of CPR, he played a vital role in stabilizing and saving a life. Officer Diaz's calm under pressure and dedication to the well-being of others are a testament to the highest standards of service and compassion. This award is presented in recognition of your heroic actions and unwavering commitment to preserving life. Congratulations. And I do want to mention the young man that he saved his life is here with the support of his family, and they want to thank you as well. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Don't we have a wonderful police department? Those guys are great. We're so blessed to have them. All right, I'd like to move on now to item 1I, to adopt a resolution number 2024. I don't have the number. Hold on, November 5th.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor LaSalle.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor LaSalle.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next item is to present the certificates of election and administer the oath of office to newly-elected council members Greg Boland, Steve, Woody Colleton, and Heidi Lang.
Okay, so Councilmembers Boland and Colleton, if you want to meet me by the front, and then Heidi, if you want to come up as well.
We will...
Okay. So you will raise your right hand, and then when I quote to you, you say your name, but you're all going to say the oath together. So I'll say it, and then you'll repeat that after me. Okay? So if I... Heidi Lang.
Steve Colleton. Greg Boland.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
And at this moment, we'll take a short break, so we can seat the new council members, and we'll be right back. Okay. Thank you for asking.
I fell in Mexico and no one was involved.
Okay. You're still missing Scott. Missing Scott. But Melanie. Waiting for Melanie.
I feel like my mom and my girls are going to kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
First day in kindergarten.
There she is, yeah. How does that make you feel? I'd like to call this meeting to the Paradise Town Council back to order and hand it off to the town clerk.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we are going to take roll call of the newly seated council. So councilmember Crowder? We're taking roll call of the new council.
Here.
Councilmember Colleton?
Here.
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Here.
And Mayor LaSanne?
Here.
Okay, so this begins the selection of the mayor. So I will just read the procedures for the selection and then open it up for nominations. So, to start, any councilmember may nominate any other councilmember, and any councilmember seated right now may be nominated for mayor. I will then ask for a motion and a second for council to close the nominations for mayor, and then a roll call vote for each councilmember nominated in the order of the nomination. When one councilmember receives the majority, so three affirmative votes, he or she will be deemed the selected mayor for a one-year term, and there will be no further vote on any subsequent nominees. And then I will turn the meeting over to the new mayor as the presiding officer, and the procedures for the selection for vice mayor will be the same. So, with that, are there any nominations to elect?
Nomination to elect Crowder.
I'd like to nominate Ron LaSanne. Motion to close.
Give me one second. Okay, so we have a nomination for Crowder by Colleton and a nomination for LaSanne by Bowlin. And then, any other nominations? No. Okay, and then who moved to close the nominations? Councilmember Colleton? And who seconded?
Bowlin.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this is roll call vote to elect councilmember Crowder as mayor. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowder?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
And councilmember LaSanne?
Aye.
So councilmember Crowder is now Mayor Crowder, and he will take over for secret.
Okay, well, so with this, I would like I would like to nominate Steve Woody Colleton for vice mayor and open the other nominations.
Well, I'll move the nominations to be closed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, motion by Colleton, seconded by LaSanne. All in favor?
Aye.
So roll call vote to elect councilmember Colleton as vice mayor. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
And councilmember LaSanne?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, thank you, everyone, and we just want to keep the momentum and progress we've got going in this town, and thank you for your trust in me and Woody. So with that, we will move on to item 1O. Campfire recovery updates. They are all written reports, and first one is Colette Curtis. Any questions for Colette? Hearing none. Any cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay, second one is Mark Maddox, Public Works Director. Any questions for Mark? Okay, hearing none. Any cards?
I have no cards on that, I have.
Okay. Next one is Tony Lindsay. Any questions for Tony? Okay, any cards?
No cards.
Okay, that was easy. Item two, consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any items off the consent?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 2B off the consent calendar.
Okay, so we will remove 2B from the consent calendar, and we'll take a vote on the remaining calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Any cards?
I have no cards.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSanne?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
So. Vice Mayor Colleton, are you removed item?
Yeah. I've been on the council a while. This is my second term this time, and I was on the council from 2004 to 2016. And apparently in 2014, we adopted a council handbook. I probably voted for it, although as I age, I don't recall that. I looked through all my files. I don't have a copy of it. The reason I pulled this off, and I would just like us to consider this at the January Order to Future meeting, in reading the staff report, there are 256 or 58 pages in the staff report. What was not in the staff report was the original, whatever that was, and whatever, and any changes. And I just need to know before I vote on something on a consent calendar where there's no discussion or anything, I want to know, okay, what are we changing and why? What are we adding or removing and why? You know, and that did not exist in this staff report. And that's why I pulled it from the thing, and my recommendation or my request would be for the council to just have this brought back at a future meeting, sometime in the future. It's not, it's something, like I say, I don't have a copy of it. I don't know if anybody sitting on this dais has a copy of it. So I don't understand what we're changing. I want to see what we're changing. I want to see why we're changing it. And that's my request.
So, any discussion?
That seems like a very reasonable request to know what the changes are. I would support that request that we see it in January with the list of changes.
Okay, so the motion is to bring this back in January?
I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by LaSanne, seconded by Colleton. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lang?
Aye.
Councilmember LaSanne?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now on to public hearings. Nope, sorry. Public communication. This is for matters that are not on the council business agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes to address the council. The council is prohibited from taking action on matters that are not listed on the public agenda. Melanie, cards?
Yes, the first card is by Chris Raymond.
Good evening, town council and town staff. I'm Chris Raymond, member of the PID Board of Directors, and I've been authorized by the district to speak on its behalf regarding PID's interest in being involved in the sewer project, which will be discussed later on tonight. The Paradise Irrigation District is pleased to express its strong support for the Town of Paradise Sewer Project. As a critical component of our community's recovery and sustainable growth, this project offers numerous benefits to public health, environmental protection, and economic revitalization. As a trusted steward of our community's water infrastructure since 1916, PID is uniquely positioned to ensure the sewer system is managed with the highest efficiency, reliability, and environmental compliance standards. In addition to supporting the project's implementation, PID is uniquely positioned to own and operate the complete sewer system on behalf of the citizens of Paradise. The proposed sewer system represents a unique opportunity to modernize Paradise's wastewater management. Furthermore, by integrating wastewater operations into PID's existing potable water infrastructure management, the town will benefit from streamlined operations, shared resources, and experienced local oversight. PID is committed to collaborating with the Town of Paradise and other stakeholders to ensure this project is successful and meets the community's needs. By entrusting PID with ownership and operation, the town can leverage our expertise in utility management and our familiarity with the California Water Resources Control Board to achieve long-term sustainability and resilience. The Paradise Irrigation District applauds the town's leadership in pursuing this critical initiative. We urge decision makers and funding entities to prioritize and support this project as a cornerstone of Paradise's recovery and future growth. As the project advances, PID stands ready to assist with lobbying, planning, implementation, and operation. Thank you for your attention to this important matter, and please don't hesitate to contact us at PID for further talks or to explore any partnering opportunities. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Second card is by Carrie Max.
Hi, town. Carrie Max here. I had a great day today. So I signed up with Recover California three and a half years ago, and I got accepted, and we broke ground today. I just wanted to tell you, thank you very much. I just wanted to know, you to know, don't need to kick me off my property because I'm building a house. Thank you.
The next card is from Brian Happ.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for all your hard work that you guys do here. I just wanted to address something with the weed abatement program, and I do believe it is a good program, well-intended. I personally would like to see it run to the fullest, to where every citizen benefits from it. I had no plans on coming today. This is my first meeting that I've come to, but today I was knocked, a contractor knocked on my door and asked if he could use my property to access another property which needed weed abatement. And it sounds like this is forcibly done on the owners of the property. I had no problem with him doing it, so he went ahead. But later on in the day, I found out more details about this property. It was never considered a threat to me. My property is three and a quarter acres. I share lot lines with eight other properties. And three, three of the properties that I share lot lines with show green on the weed abatement map, but I can tell you personally, they are not safe. They do not have 30-foot clearance, and they, or if they are under an acre and a half, they are not clear. And I actually brought it up with the inspector one time when he showed up at my neighbor's house, property, I should say, there's no home there. And the inspector told me they had failed, and he was there to talk to the owner about it. And low and behold, nothing was done to that property, and yet they're marked green on the map now. And I can vouch for, nothing was done to that property. So, but the property I'm here to talk about today, I never deemed it a threat. It's another four-acre parcel of property. It's been cleared, about one-third of it's been cleared. The third that wasn't cleared is on the other side of a creek. And I do know, I have met the neighbors of the property. They're a young couple with, I think, two or three kids. They intend on building there. They're, they've invested in the property, but they do not invest in any other properties. They have a permit on file with a, to build, but they were taken advantage of by one of the Canadian building companies and lost money in that. So I can only imagine they're experiencing hardships. Now, their next hardship is going to be the weed abatement program. Now, to make matters a little more challenging, that parcel that's being abated is bordered by a 10-acre parcel and a five-acre parcel, and then our parcel on the other side. I've cleared my property. I paid for an excavator to come in. We pulled out all the debris so that we could get down to, you know, dirt again and just get a fresh start. The 10-acre parcel and the five-acre parcel on the other two sides are the same, it's the same situation. There's no threat to houses on this property, and I believe that it should be considered that there are hardships, and I, and I hope that you would understand.
So, you're, you're out of time. Thank you for that, and I might, with, with parcels that are marked clear and aren't, Tony Lindsey in the back, if you can give him the information, he can, he can look into that. And Tony, you?
Can I with him?
Thank you.
The next card is for Jamie Happ.
Thank you, council. I think my husband said mostly, we are grateful. There's no town I'd rather be in than this town and be part of the rebuild. And what we see tonight is just a reminder of that. And so I just, again, just to add, the property next to that property is also the sister of the family, and they don't know we're here tonight. We're just looking out for neighbors because that's what people of Paradise do. The contractor is being asked to take out weeds on their fence. I happen to know it's grapevines on a fence. This is landscaping, and so I will also talk. But I think what we want our town to hear is that these programs, these ordinances are good, but always remember that there's people behind them too, that we know that we're from a community of older people and a growing community of younger people. My husband and I find ourselves in that middle where it's a little easier. But we know how hard it was to rebuild and get back, and we know that our neighbors are in that same place, and they're wanting to build back a great community too. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have no other cards.
With that, we're going to move on to the item five, public hearing and staff report. Thank you.
Hello. So today, we are having a public hearing for the CDBG CV funding. That's a Community Development Block grant for COVID. Any changes that we make to a plan, more than 25% of the budget, or when we cancel an activity or add to an activity, we need to discuss it with the public and with council and give people the option to weigh in. So we had put the money into a bucket, essentially, for emergency rental assistance. The program was not very successful. We had very few applicants. There's just so many rules involved. It made it really difficult to spend that money. It made it really difficult for people to be eligible for the funding. So rather than continue with that program, we are proposing that we have a new activity under Public Services, a couple new activities, one of which is reimbursing some already incurred costs from Meals on Wheels. It's Chico Meals on Wheels, but this is specific to Paradise residents. Paradise Meals on Wheels no longer exists. Chico Meals on Wheels took over their service area. So while the funding would go to Chico Meals on Wheels, it would be specific to costs incurred serving Paradise residents. The other one is the Neighbor to Neighbor Grant with the Parks District. They have a grant from the state. We want to help them leverage that funding with this funding to expand their program to include more senior and disabled residents. One of the reasons why we want to do that is because leveraging the funding, leveraging grant funding is always a good thing. We don't want to reinvent the wheel and create our programs of our own necessarily when someone else is already doing them. It's expensive. We end up having our nonprofits compete against each other. It works better when we work together. The reason why I want to specifically target senior and disabled residents is because all CDBG funding must benefit low-to-moder income residents. And that's defined by less than 80% area meeting income. We do not qualify as a low-income area, so we can't just do something in one spot. Any other activity, we would have to verify the income of the person benefiting. I do the income verification in our housing department for all of our housing loans. That involves three years of tax returns, six months of bank statements, all accounts, all pages from every adult member of the household, six months of pay stubs, Venmo, PayPal, Cash App, everything. I have to see everything. It's expensive, and it takes a long time. So anytime we can have an activity that doesn't get into that level of detail into a person's finances, the better. By targeting specifically senior and disabled residents, they're a protected class. They're presumed to be low-income. So anytime we do an activity that by its nature is for a senior or disabled resident, we don't have to check their income. Just check a birth date, essentially. Anyways, so a public hearing is really just announcing to the public, this is what we're doing. And then they have 30 days to make comments, make suggestions, ask questions. Any comment gets attached to our amendment, to our original plan, and all of it gets submitted to HUD, which is where our funding came from. And if we don't spend the money, it just goes back to HUD. It's from them. It's not general fund money. It's not local money. And if we don't spend it within the amount of time that they've given us, then it just goes back to them. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
For the public's benefit, this money has to be some way related to COVID, right?
Correct.
So, just so you understand, in the staff report, somebody has done a study in the United States that says the mortality impact of being socially disconnected is similar to that caused by smoking up to 15 cigarettes a day. It further says, people who are less socially connected may have increased susceptibility and weaker immune responses when they are exposed to infectious diseases. So that's the tie-in for Parks and Rec Neighbor to Neighbor Grant, being given this extra $100,000 when they develop a program. What doesn't click in my mind is COVID is an infectious disease. And so if I'm out socially, that's where I get contact with it. There's something that doesn't make sense here to me. My question, though, is about the money. When I had a conversation with you earlier, you said, this money that HUD gave us, we get to keep until when?
About 2027.
Okay, so we've not been very successful at doing rental assistance because of the restrictions of income, what have you, and having to justify all that. But if we did some advertising, if we don't give it to anybody, if we just let it sit in our bucket, and we advertise to our senior community and to our handicapped community that we have funds to assist them with their rent or home payment or whatever, could it not be used that way?
Probably not, because if they are, if they're already renting somewhere, then they likely wouldn't qualify.
We're not sure about that?
I just want to jump in really quickly and answer that. So that's an excellent, excellent question. We've tried very hard to get the information out about this program. And the fact that it's underutilized, in our view, does not have to do with not enough people knowing about it. It really has to do with the rules being extremely stringent through HUD, which is, you know, pretty normal with their programs. It's very difficult to spend.
I get that. I get that. My, my concern is, it is just something real odd about taking this money, giving it to Recreation Park District to develop a program to do neighbor to neighbor, which is about bringing people together, is, which is where they, when they get COVID.
That makes sense.
It's a real stretch.
Yeah, I absolutely hear that. But what we're, what we're trying to do is taking HUD's rules and how we can spend this money and finding a way to spend that in our community rather than having to give it back.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, I, I just think that it's a little bit flaky, you know? They don't even have a program. I mean, if, if you were at, you know, I mean, that's what challenges me. It's like, oh, no, we're just gonna, we're gonna continue with this public hearing. The public can make comments, and then in a month, we're gonna have another public hearing, and we'll, we'll vote on it, and we will move that money into that bucket. And then they're gonna meet somewhere on their own, and they're gonna develop a program that'll let them spend that money. So we don't really get the money. You know, I mean, I understand about in the community, but nobody has a program because of the scritinge, because of the rules that HUD and these, these funds. Sometimes it's cheaper to give the money back. We don't always have to, you know, I mean, when, I don't know.
Well, the alternative to that is to spend a lot of time and money and energy to develop a program and have one ready to go, and then come here and have the council vote no. So this is kind of the alternative. If we're essentially just moving money from savings to checking.
Listen, if you ask me to vote to give money to Parks and Recreation District to develop a program to spend the money that was given to us, I'm not sure I'm in favor of being a yes vote on something like that. I mean, I don't have any problem with, let's find a way to spend the money. Let's advocate, let's use the money, the admin money that we have in that, in that grant, to, let's go lobby HUD and explain to them how idiotic some, don't give us money we can't spend. Don't tie it up to where nobody can use it.
I don't think that would be an eligible use of the funds.
Well, then we should be having those conversations. And the other thing is, if, if it's that hard to spend their money, give it back to them. Let them figure out how to spend it.
So, Councilmember Colleton, we appreciate your feedback. This is the program as it's presented, and so, you know, if there are any other questions about that, this is how the program is presented. We are very clear with HUD regarding our opinion about their rules, but these are the rules that we are required to follow.
I understand that. I just think that all of this stuff that's in this report about tying this to COVID with this, if you have social, if you're sitting alone, you're more, this is a stretch. This is a real stretch, you know? Anybody with any intelligence reading this, how does that apply?
Let's, let's get more questions from council.
The report is from the Surgeon General. It's the 2023 Report, Our Epidemic of Loneliness and Isolation, the U.S. Surgeon General's Advisory on the Hearing Effects of the Social Connection and Community, published in 2023. It's not, I didn't Google this. Like, this is a Surgeon General's report. I was just as surprised as you are when I heard. Sure. But the alternative is Meals on Wheels. Is, we want to make COVID funding available for this population. One way is this way, where we're gonna have people who want to get together and get out of their homes either way. And the other way, it doesn't require them to do that if that's not what they're comfortable with.
So, any, any other questions?
Let's open it up.
Okay, so with that, it is 7:04. Let's open it up to public comments. Any comments from the public? Any cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay, it's 7:04. We will close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion.
So you're looking for a motion to move this forward or to accept it?
I'm aye.
And we do it again next month?
I believe we just need to open it for the public comment period, which is gonna be for 30 days. Right, so we have the, just this part right now. We can't expect everyone to just, you know, oh, I have an idea. They have 30 days.
But there's a roll call vote called on here. What's that for? What's the, what's the motion?
I believe it's to approve the public comment period.
Yeah, so the way it's written is to approve the, the substantial amendment. But does that need a second public hearing?
No, it wouldn't need a subsequent public hearing. It would be to approve the amendment, and then any public comment that gets made in the next 30 days gets attached to it and submitted to HUD.
Okay.
So is that constituted roll call vote?
Yes.
I'll move that we, we approve the amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Bolin, seconded by LaSalle. Councilmember Bolin.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
No.
Councilmember Lang.
Aye.
Councilmember LaSalle.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
So just to be clear, we're, we're voting on this to, to, and we've still got a 30-day public hearing, correct?
Yes, that the comments will be attached when it's submitted to HUD. But it does not come back to council.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. So you would be voting on the substantial amendment as, as submitted. Any public comment received within the next 30 days would be included in that substantial amendment when it's submitted to HUD. And then they decide whether they grant the substantial amendment.
Okay, but, so we don't see it again?
Do the comments I made go with that?
Yes, yes, they would.
Okay, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. On to item six, council consideration. These are action items presented by staff. 6A is consider appointing council representative and alternatives to represent the Town of Paradise on various local and regional boards, committee and commissions. Melanie?
Yes, so in your packet, you will find the Bute County Committees and Commissions and the other local committees within Paradise. And so it had the list of last year of the committees that council represented, and it has a blank list if you would like to switch your committees. So I suppose we could take it one by one.
Well, we'll do that, or I'm good with staying with what we have. I'll just be off the finance committee. I'd get off of that, and rest of it, I'm good with. Well, the finance committee is mayor, vice mayor, so I'm off. That's, that's a no-brainer.
You want to consort you up here?
I, I can't hear you. I think that's a no.
Okay, so Heidi kind of needs to weigh into this because we've got what Rose was doing. And so Heidi, let's, let's hear.
Rose dropped off a few of them as well, and I ended up picking up a couple of them, so I'd like to give up them as well.
Okay, so where, where?
So would you like to take it committee by committee? And I can tell you who was on it last time, and you can see who wants to be on it this time.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
Okay, so number one, Air Quality Management District. Last year, it was LaSalle and Tryon.
She was primary, and I was the alternate. I'll take it as primary.
Okay. And who, would somebody like to be an alternate on that one?
I'm not particularly interested in air quality management, but if we're drawing straws.
Alternate, okay. So the Association of Governments, last time, it was Tryon who was a representative, and LaSalle, that was the alternate.
I'd like to take it as primary.
Primary.
And I'd like Heidi as alternate.
They meet at the same time, right?
They meet one after another.
One after another, correct.
In the same building.
When are their meetings, just out of curiosity?
Thursdays.
In the evening?
Written down, yeah. Fourth Thursday for both of them. The BCAGS at 9:00 a.m., and that's most of the time on Zoom. And then, you know, or in-person, either way. And then air quality is right after that, but it's always in-person.
So if at all possible, I'd like to respect my work schedule. I work Monday through Thursday until noon. Maybe, maybe it would be best if somebody else took those.
Any, any interest?
By me? No.
So, air quality? So, air quality, alternate, and Association of Government? I'll, I'll be the alternate on those then.
Heidi got that?
No, Heidi did not, because she's.
Okay, the next one is the City Selection Committee, which has to be the mayor, so that will be Crowder. Same with the Disaster Council, that will be the mayor, so that'd be Crowder. LAFCO, Bolin was appointed for a four-year term ending in 2027.
So he had to get reelected.
Yes. So Bolin will be the representative on that one. The Mosquito Infecter Control Board, Melissa Schuster was appointed for a four-year term on that to end in 2027.
And she's still good with that?
Yes. And so the, the next one is the Waste Management Local Task Force. Last year, it was Bolin and Colleton.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Bunch of garbage, good.
Huh?
Nothing.
I like talking trash.
So the next one is the City slash County Ad-Hoc Committee. Last year, it was Colleton?
Yes, I wanted to do that some more.
Okay. And then Collet Curtis is a representative on the Tourism Business Improvement District, and LaSalle was also a representative last year.
I'm fine with that. You're fine with that?
Yes.
Okay, Consortium of Care, Colleton was the representative, and LaSalle was the alternate.
Okay.
Are we gonna keep that the same?
How many trips do you have planned?
Well, we can give that to Heidi, because it never meets.
Which one?
Continuation of care. You have me on that for you.
Consortium of Care.
Heidi gets that because she's a new council.
Oh, okay, that's even better.
And it meets all the time, that's a problem. There's 700 people on the committee, and it's all about homeless people in it. So, you know, I don't wanna be there anymore, but.
Are you okay doing that? As, as the primary? Yes? Yeah. Okay. Do we want an alternate in that committee?
I'll be the alternate. Is that Consortium of Care?
Yes.
Yeah, they have my name on there.
Okay. Butte County Fire Safe Council, it was Tryon who was representative last time?
I would mind doing that. I need to get more involved with the Fire Safe Council.
I'd be happy to be an alternate for the Fire Safe Council.
Okay.
You wanna be the primary, and I'll be your alternate. It's up to, I mean, if you want it.
I'll, I would prefer the alternate for those, because I have a whole list down below, so.
Yeah, I just wanna get more involved with that.
Okay, so for the local committees, Paradise Community Village, last year, Colleton, or Bolin was the representative, and Colleton was the alternate.
Is that really a, a thing? I know it's not happening, right? I mean, it's, I mean, I'll be on it, but it's, there's nothing.
I, I, I was, I, I don't think there's been a meeting in three or four years.
I don't know why we haven't listed.
The next one is the Paradise Irrigation District Liaison Committee.
Yeah, I should be on that one.
I'll be, yeah, right. I'll be on it.
Okay, so Bolin and Colleton?
No. You're, you're on it? Oh, I thought LaSalle.
I said I should be on it.
I thought LaSalle was on it. Yeah, Ron.
Yeah, Ron was on it.
You want it?
Yeah, if I can have it, I'll take it.
Okay. I changed, I changed my mind, I'll stay on it.
Oh, come on. Give it a chance. They need, they need a little.
You got continuation of care. Those 700 people take care of it.
Never meets.
Am I putting on LaSalle or Colleton?
I don't have any, yeah, there's.
Okay, LaSalle it is. Paradise Recreation and Park District Liaison, this last year, it was Crowder and Colleton.
Yeah, we should keep going.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
During the last month, I voted no.
The Paradise Solid Waste Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
So it'd be Bolin and Colleton.
Yes.
The Onsite Ad-Hoc Committee, last year, it was Bolin and Crowder.
That's fine.
Did that meet?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It does once in a while, but didn't.
Okay, Finance Committee is mayor, vice mayor, so that's Crowder and Colleton. So the Butte County Oversight Board, last year, it was LaSalle. I think that has to be mayor as well. So that would be Crowder. The Paradise Sewer Regionalization Project Advisory Committee?
Did you share that, Ron, or not?
I would be interested in being, one, either the primary or the alternate for that.
There's two.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I mean, I've been on this before, I was on council, so I'm, I'm, I wanna stay on it.
Well, you can.
So that's.
Because Heidi wants to be on it.
So that's three, so who would like to be on it?
Who's on it? Heidi wants to be on it.
Okay.
Steve wants to be on it.
You can have it.
We could arm Russell for it.
No, Ron, Ron said he was fine, so.
I wanna see that.
So who's on?
Okay, so Crowder and Lang. And then the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee, so that is mayor, vice mayor, or designate. So do we want Crowder and Colleton, or would you like to designate somebody?
I, I would like to stay on that, and.
You're the mayor, so you get to stay on unless you designate somebody. I designated you last time, and that's why you're on it.
So you can designate somebody, or stay on it. You can designate yourself.
And, okay.
Unless a vice mayor's on it, unless you want to designate.
I'll be on it, because I have advice for the legislators.
Okay, and the Healthcare Ad-Hoc Committee. So last year, it was Crowder and LaSalle.
I'd like to stay on it.
I would be interested in participating in the healthcare committee as well, if that's, if there's an opening.
We'll make one, we have three.
So Lang and LaSalle?
No, Steve is on it, and I'm on it. We both need to stay on it for continuity, and Heidi wants to pop in, that's great.
Okay.
I'd love to have a third person.
Okay.
Well, you can only have two.
But that's, because of Steve's and I's history on it, and people we're working with, we need to continue it, because it's right mid-flight right now, because we got that contract out to do the study.
I'm happy to just be an, an extra, just be an attendee.
I'll put you as an alternate then.
Tell us what happens.
No, we're not gonna tell you.
No, you do, you have to.
Okay.
Okay.
That concludes that, thank you.
I would also like to propose that we consider putting together a committee representative for the school district. I think as one of the most significant stakeholders in the community, I think it would be appropriate to consider that as a formal representation.
Will they let us in there? Yes.
I'll give you the secret password.
Well, they'll let you in, okay, we'll let you in.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, if, if we have stuff to talk about, I think there are things that come up that you.
Well, we, we have it with, you know, mostly the other big stakeholders, and so I, I think that's a great idea.
And I would like to be one of the representatives.
No, you can't do that.
Too late.
Just kidding, just kidding.
So what do we need to do to?
So I believe that would be put on the agenda next meeting for the council, under a council-initiated item.
Okay.
And is that something that the school district has to participate, I mean, they have to agree to that?
They already did.
Oh, they already did?
Mm-hmm.
Whoa. Whoa. Sandbag.
So let, let's, let, so Heidi, you wanna put that on the agenda for, which is that now, or do we wait till we get?
Well, we get to number seven, and we'll talk about it.
Okay. You all done?
Yes.
With item six A.
Okay. So, six B?
You'll send us a list of that.
Yes.
Here, an informational update on the Paradise Sewer Project, which summarizes recent developments. Mark?
I need to recuse myself for this one.
Okay. So, Mark, this is the one you've been waiting for.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor Crowder, good evening, council, and it's my pleasure to provide an update on the Paradise Sewer Project. So for some quick background, obviously, for our newly-elected council member Lang, and also for the community that hasn't been tracking this project, the Town of Paradise has been searching for a formal wastewater treatment and disposal solution since its incorporation in 1979. I provided a background, kind of chain of events over the last 14 years, starting in the 2010, with a study about performing a downtown cluster system study. 2012, a comparative analysis looking at local versus regional. In 2017, pre-fire, we were looking at the project feasibility as well, comparing local and regional alternatives. Following the 2018 campfire, the town did a reanalysis and selected a regional option for advancing the Paradise Sewer Project. Since that time, we've, have a fully-certified programmatic environmental impact report, and we have a signed agreement between the Town of Paradise and the city of Chico. From there, we hired our progressive design-build team, and I want to thank them for being here this evening, representing the project and, and helping us get to critical information faster here tonight. So with that, we are tracking towards presentation of the Basis of Design Report on behalf of Mountain Cascade and the Corolo team in partnership with the town and HDR. And moving forward, we still have some steps ahead of us, but with the information that we've received, we found it very critical for us to get this information in front of the council about the project costs and some options moving forward. Again, if we're looking at the progressive design-build process, this is where we are able to leverage, again, the contractor in partnership with the design engineering team to go through the project design together, hand in hand, to develop a guaranteed maximum price, so that we can sign that contract and build it and know what we're gonna get for the price that we set. The traditional alternative would be design-bid-build, where you simply go out for a contract and award to the lowest, lowest bidder, and you're subject to different contract issues and change orders down the road. And so this is a much more collaborative and innovative process for a project of this size. So we're really grateful and excited for the work that we've accomplished. We're still in the early stages of that. As you saw, we are hoping to have construction complete and operational by 2031. And so, right now, where we are in the Basis of Design Report is a great opportunity to where if we have to make a change, this is where we do it. So our project funding goals, as we set out to move forward the Paradise Sewer Project, and some background, we have 1,500 parcels out of the entire Town of Paradise. Is interesting here, as a side note, we've recently looked at the pace of recovery in light of the 2018 campfire for areas within the sewer service area and for areas without the sewer service area, or, I'm sorry, excluded from the sewer service area. So, our sewer service area is highlighted here in orange, and if we look at the Rebuild Paradise Foundation's online interactive map about that first step in recovery and rebuilding and performing that property survey, and we take the parcels town-wide that have done that, about 31% of all parcels have a property survey recorded. Inside the sewer service area, only 16% of parcels have those rebuild surveys completed. So that tells us a very critical piece of information about the importance of this project and its effects on recovery. So when we're looking to build it, our goal was to secure full project capital funding. That means environmental design right away in construction. We're trying to avoid parcel taxes and fees and districting to finance the project so we can maximize our, our project recovery and our potential and the individual homeowner and landowner basis. Our goal is also to establish traditional rate structure with the operations and maintenance assistance by the town. We've done that proactively on the Town of Paradise side, to where we know that if we were having, having to finance and refund the project entirely from grants due to the impacts of the campfire, these rates would be at a rate, or at a level that are higher than the standard by a long shot. So earlier this year, Paradise Town Council adopted a measure to where the town would provide O and M assistance so that rates can be at a normal market level until the town reaches full build-out, and we have more rate payers come online as recovery is enabled by the project. So in our funding pursuits, on the left here, we have a list of secured funding. We have used an $800,000 grant from USDA. When it comes to CDBGDR funding that goes through HUD and back to the Town of Paradise through HCD at the state level, that's Housing Community Development, we have two critical grants to, to report. One is a $30 million CDBGDR planning grant that's really meant for the design phase of the project, the pre-construction work. And then out of our $200 million CDBGDR infrastructure funding allotment that goes to a lot of different projects, including road and sewer efforts, we have $16 million out of that total allocation for the Paradise Sewer Project construction. We're also extremely grateful for Congressman Lamalfa's office securing $1.75 million in congressionally-directed spending that is coming through EPA. Those are funds that were intended to be used for the regional connection payment to the city of Chico, out of our total cost of 14.9 million. At this point, and as you'll see in the progression of the, the presentation, we are working with EPA and really hopeful that if there is a change in direction on project, on the project, that we can use these funds towards the revised project scope. To date, we've also received 2.8 million through the State Water Board and Division of Financial Assistance. That really helped us, helped carry us through the environmental impact report I discussed earlier. And then, moving forward and, and looking back, as far as funding opportunities, we've looked at FEMA, public assistance, the BRIC program, I'll have more on that in a moment. We've contacted EDA, USDA, again, we're still working with the State Water Board. We've performed heavy amounts of federal advocacy as well as at the state level. So I'm gonna quickly go through these next couple of sides, or slides about a few funding programs with really kind of painting a picture of funding amounts that are likely, unlikely, and their, their maximum award and potential match requirement. So the FEMA BRIC program, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities, that comes through, again, through FEMA and CALOES. We've done some initial consultation with them. Unfortunately, at this point, as the project is currently scoped, being a regional, a regional project with the city of Chico, we aren't as quite as competitive as they would like us to see, but that doesn't mean it's not an opportunity that we can't review moving forward again if our project does change. We're also looking at the Army Corps of Engineers program. We're aware of about a $50 million allocation. It's a, it's called a two-night team program through the Army Corps. We're looking at exploring options with our legislative affairs teams to schedule a mid-December meeting to find more information about this program. We are also aware that, like any program involving the Army Corps, that it would come with a lot of heavy restrictions and requirements on how the implementation of the project would, would go. But this is still something we're interested in looking at, especially if it's able to yield $50 million towards the overall project cost. So as, at the state level, we've been looking at the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. At this time, our likely award is about 30 million, based on the current intended use plan. This is a likely opportunity, though conditions can change on the state level, and you'll see more about that here in a few moments. Proposition four also passed recently in this election. This is obviously very new, and we are not quite sure how it's going to be implemented, but we are working today, and, and as we go forward, on how we can engage and bring forward our project for consideration in this new project and this new bond that provides up to $610 million in grants or loans that improve water quality or help provide clean, safe, and reliable drinking water. So here's a couple of other programs through EPA and California Office of Planning and Research. Here, again, likely grant award amounts at this point would be 10 million and 3 million dollars respectively, and, but at this point, we don't have those secured, and something that we continue to review as we go forward. But here is kind of why we're here tonight, and expressing a strong interest to communicate with our elected officials in the community about the project costs over, over time. I started the presentation really summarizing the 2012 efforts, where the regionalization option was really studied and, and stated to cost about $29 million. Over time, we've seen that number continue to go up, and obviously, there's a wide range of reasons for that, but as, kind of in summary, is the closer and closer we get, and the having the right team investigate the actual cost to get it done in Paradise in consideration of all of the constraints that we have here, whether it be our soils or our high groundwater, or the sheer complexity of the project to actually build a collection system with an export pipeline 18 miles to the water pollution control plant in Chico. So as evidenced here, we've been really doing a lot of advocacy work to secure an additional $262 million in construction funds, but right now, our estimates are ranging between over $400 million to $480 million. And so, as you can imagine, in some funding programs, that's more than an entire allotment statewide in a given year or multiple years, depending on the program. So we really are looking forward to understanding this, as well as getting direction on how to move forward, considering the high project costs, and really having a reality check to move forward, considering the high project costs, and really having a reality check about what is the likelihood about getting all of this funding and grants upfront versus looking at something that we can phase, expand, and build. And that's our goal, because we understand in the 2018 campfire and our recovery that this is the most critical project for the Town of Paradise as we move forward. So with that, I can summarize the state budget changes from originally when we were looking at the regional option and there was more funding available that this project would have been eligible for. There was certainly a budget surplus, and now we are operating at the state level into a budget deficit that is not expected to resolve for quite some time. So no state program has been spared in those budget cuts, and we've seen the Water Board report that as well. And so we are understanding of that information, as disappointing as it is for us and as our hopes and desires were to secure full project funding around this time. But with the change in the economic climate at the state level, across federal levels as well, we are not on track to do that at this time. But also, there are some key factors affecting project costs that I'd like to discuss. There's a huge difference between feasibility study and actually performing engineering design concepts and desktop reviews versus doing the geotechnical analysis versus understanding what permitting agencies would require, and having the expertise in the room to be able to tell us that that is a price that a project can be built for. So those are definitely affecting project costs. Utilizing progressive design build, as I mentioned earlier, is it kind of lends itself to being conservatively high early on the project, so we go eyes wide open moving forward into construction. I already talked about the traditional method of design bid build, where we're very familiar with being saddled with contract change orders based on something we didn't see coming at the engineering level. So with that and this team, while we're disappointed the project cost is high as it is, it allows us to adapt and be flexible and move forward. And I'd be the first to acknowledge, and it's easy to see based on that scale of project cost increases, certainly there's been some underestimations on what it costs to build a collection system in Paradise, as well as an export pipeline to the regional plant. So here is kind of what we're describing as a range of project costs based on what we need to move forward to complete as it's currently visioned as a regional project. There's cost components relating to engineering design, the right-of-way. The right-of-way is certainly a much costlier endeavor than initially anticipated, but then when it comes to the export pipeline, the collection system, and the other issues or items that are needed as a part of construction, the number adds up pretty quick. We have a basis of design report that's, again, coming forward in the council in the next month or two. But this team has been along the way implementing value-engineered analysis to find cost reductions now. But as we go forward in that and the realization that we're made has been made and why we're here tonight is that anticipated savings are on the scale of tens of millions, certainly not hundreds of millions. I already talked a lot about factors affecting funding availability, but I'll resummarize them here. The state budget challenges are one, but also the Town of Paradise is not the only community in California with wastewater needs. Here on the right is just a screenshot of one of several pages on the intended use plan of projects that are getting funded or being considered for funding. We were told even today that funding requests in this program exceed $2.5 billion, and they have on the scale of hundreds of millions to administer. So that's been a huge challenge for us. While we understand our situation is very unique, when we are working with staff level that are charged to work within the intended use plan or the regulations and requirements that they are required to follow, it is very difficult for us to achieve exceptions to the rules because of what we've been through and the facts related with our project and the needs that we have here. But with that, we continue to work, and our goal is to maximize every funding program that's out there, and even ones that are prioritizing residential connections, for example, at the State Water Board level. But then also, our conversations with EDA are really interested in commercial connections. And so there's a lot of give and take there, and so our goal is to optimize and report back on what we can secure to get this project built. Loans are continuing to be a part of the conversation. While I mentioned $30 million through the State Water Board as far as a grant and principal forgiveness, we are looking at being eligible for $50 million in loans. But as you recall, about eight slides ago, I mentioned that any amount of loans and costs associated with the financing of that loan is a cost that has to be borne somewhere. And so our goal has been to keep rates affordable, and so any loan that we do agree to is going to be one that has to be done with much care on how that loan's going to be repaid and how it's going to affect the homeowner or property owner that connects and signs up for this project as well. So for some recent project developments, I'll just summarize here that our PDB team has been preparing that draft basis of design report and a construction cost model update. Our town staff has met with three Water Board members that are appointed by the governor, and one of the big takeaways was to set up a workshop with the Division of Financial Assistance, which we have done, and continue to kind of work through this project, find a way to achieve the highest project benefit at the lowest cost that can be fundable. I already mentioned the construction cost estimates. As far as the project workshop, we held one on November 15th with, I'm sorry, the Water Board Division of Financial Assistance, Housing and Community Development, and Chico staff. And as a result of that, and you saw in issuance of immediate release, we are advising, based on this collective information on costs and funding, the project as it's currently planned is financially infeasible, meaning that we should not expect to secure $450 million in grant funds to pay for the project as it's currently scoped. So with that, we recognize the need to pivot to a smaller-scale base project for a localized treatment option. The plant is just too far away, and when you add in the complexities of the cost of our collection system, it's really not conducive to move forward at the cost that we're seeing and the funding available to pay for it. We hosted a second project workshop today with the Division of Financial Assistance and HCD, and our goal is to continue to find funding level support from DFA and others to allow for special considerations by decision-making bodies. And then we also set forward a plan to prepare a range of scaled alternatives to consider moving forward. And that's a really good segue about kind of some information here on what could a revised project scope look like? And a couple of considerations that are big departures from our last presentations about the project, the first being considering a local treatment plant. We have not determined any potential locations or any decisions made about where or what size that could look like, but it's certainly something we need to consider if we're looking to build a project here in Paradise. It would require revised environmental analysis for potential impacts. But what is new is that we do have the Regional Water Quality Control Board staff support. Being a permissible project is critically important. And so when I reflect back on the last four years that we have spent on advancing the regional option, this has brought us invaluable information on a project that just ends up being more expensive at a time when there's less funding available, but there's tons of information that can be used to pivot quickly to build a project here locally. And with that, we have their support and understanding no longer is the regional project feasible, is that there is an opportunity to implement a localized treatment plant with technology improvements that now enable extremely high treatment standards on smaller parcels or smaller scales here in Paradise. So that's huge. We also need to consider a smaller sewer service area. You also saw that project estimate with the ranges. It's not just getting rid of the export pipeline, and we get to build it, and we have a project that's fundable, is that the collection system is very expensive in itself, and we need to consider our project today as Phase One with a goal of ultimate service area in the future. We need to review options which achieve, again, the highest benefit, the lowest cost, considering our groundwater risk, our zoning, multifamily, commercial, existing structures, and rate payers, and other factors on prioritizing where it could be served first moving forward. And then lastly, we really do have to be creative and reevaluate what is realistic about project funding, and if that needs to include reviewing and revising financing options, including loans, or whether it's a formation of a district or other fee structure for connections to get this project done. I think those are conversations that are, albeit difficult, ones that have to happen again. So here, I'll point out again our original sewer service area, and I'll say is that our goal moving forward is to quickly adapt to a project that'll allow us to reaffirm and revise an environmental document, achieve a fundable project, a scalable project, in a quick and efficient, timely manner. I'll mention here, what I'm going to show is a series of about six slides of what it could be. These are slides and geographic boundaries that were just drawn by hand essentially and converted to a great map with really critical information we have collected by the team. But these are not final, they are not prioritized. These are just talking opportunities with the council and the community about what our priorities are and how do we move forward, because we understand no project is not an option for Paradise. So with that, here's one out of six. So this is Sewer Service Area 1 that would focus on downtown Paradise, really kind of, again, similar to the CB zoning and other discussions that have been having about this area, that could support our real opportunity area and critical space for recovery, whether that be commercial, multifamily, residential, mixed-use. That is critically important, and this is an opportunity to where if we need to look at, in redefining what is success at this point, if we were to redefine success as serving this area or this area plus a few others, would that be considered success and something we can build on to the future? And so that's ultimately for the council and the community to decide, but this is one graphic that shows out of this area, there's 217 parcels with 138 of them vacant. And that's really critical, again, indicative of the absence of a sewer project. And so we'd obviously like that to change and provide more better community services, a more robust recovery when it comes to housing and affordable housing and multifamily housing. And so that's why this area is drawn as SSA 1. Moving along, I'm going to just cover these as opportunities to kind of attach on or subtract from kind of what could be a revised project scope. So this would be Pearson to Town Limits, could serve Town Hall, could serve the health clinic, could serve recovery opportunities along the areas between Pearson and Town Limits. SSA 3, looking at Elliott to Billy on Skyway. There's 157 parcels there in that area with 102 currently vacant. But again, a lot of business areas that are currently vacant in this area could serve the True Value Marketplace area, a couple of restaurants, a coffee shop, critical spaces that need and are really counting on the Paradise Sewer Project to reach full construction. Here is opportunity that could attach on to the downtown area, the Sierra Park and Scottwood infill. This obviously was included in the original sewer service area, has a high benefit for residential connections. I mentioned that's one of the priorities that the state is residential conversions. So this obviously checks a few of those. When we look at SSA 5, this is what I call the Maxwell infill, has a high benefit, serving the school and serving Ridgeview across the street, Eagle Point, which was just recently completed, multifamily housing there. There's a couple of opportunities there with existing multifamily housing off of Nunley that could potentially be served to Elliott. So this one has a lot of benefit and can see moving up and down the scale of priorities as we're able to determine what is a realistic project budget that we can advance forward. Closing with the last one on SSA 6, this is Skyway, Billy to Wagstaff. This one's certainly included. We have infrastructure projects along this corridor to widen Skyway, to have one lane in each direction with a center turn lane, sidewalks, and a bike path, and certainly a great opportunity to add a sewer to serve the existing businesses along this corridor, as well as ones to come into the future. Now, when we talk about the sewer project, it's always been about finding the three most critical components. It's not just collection, it's not just treatment, it's also dispersal. So when we look at this local option, we have to reconsider all three of those factors, and there's not one that's perfect, that's going to address all three in a really easy way that everyone can agree on. But to start the conversation, and a conversation that happened earlier today in our workshop, is that we could look at treatment plant locations, some that were reviewed in 2017 and 2020, along Skyway, Neil, and Clark. One option, there's really two for dispersal after the treatment process is complete. One is land application that requires area for storage and evaporation or irrigation of crops. Obviously, in Paradise, that's not a, you know, strong viable alternative. In the 2020 analysis, we even looked at having storage ponds at the bottom of the hill near State Route 99, about to the scale of 400 acres for the full project build-out. That's not to say that we couldn't find an opportunity with a reduced-scale project to have ponds in town or closer to town, but it still presents challenges ultimately for storage. You have to factor in things like the winter seasons and intense rain events that can exceed capacity of the pond. And so those are all things we have to have mechanisms in place to address, and why a local treatment plant option is not just an easy build, set, and forget type method. It is something that is very, very complex, and has a lot of regulatory requirements for us to address in that process. So that's one side of it, land application, ponds, irrigation, storage, evaporation. And then the other is discharging to a surface water body, whether that be a creek or stream that runs year-round, or exploring what would be the requirements for an effluent-dominated stream or creek, which is, to be honest, if we were solely looking at a surface water discharge, that would be what would be the issue. And what really prevented us from looking at an effluent, I'm sorry, the local option in the past is, a lot of our requirements would be, or a lot of our discharge would be creating an effluent-dominated stream, meaning you have water running in the drainage channel that is almost entirely treated wastewater. I mentioned there's been advances in the treatment technology. That is something that can be overcome, but you can imagine the risk level on that just goes up and up and up as you have to rely on an effluent-dominated stream. So that's something we could consider, especially that's going to be factor in and tie into where the treatment plant is sited. We could look at beneficial reuse, again, that's been thrown around, something in the past and something that could be looked at again. What we mean by beneficial reuse is after the treatment process is complete, essentially distributing it to an end user, whether that be irrigation for parks, or if we had the golf course, or something like that, where the water could be recycled and reused. That would have a lower treatment standard than certainly a surface water discharge to a creek or stream. But it's something that has its own costs associated with it as well, let alone operations and maintenance, but the capital for essentially a collection system, and now you have a distribution system of that treated water. And so the point here is that we have a plan to look at a local treatment plant option, but it's going to come with some tough conversations and decisions on the scale service area and what to do with the treated effluent. I'm sorry. And then, so in closing, getting close there, thank you for your patience. There are a lot of benefits. I opened that, and I'll close it here. There are a lot of benefits to understand now versus at the traditional project bidding phase, our project cost issue. We have some potential efficiencies on project schedule. By removing the regional option and going local while there's other issues to address, we no longer would have to look at directional drilling underneath Butte Creek, or State Route 99, or underneath Union Pacific Railroad crossings, or a couple of smaller creeks between here and the treatment plant. And so those were going to be very heavy, and you heard in our update in September, very heavy permitting, long lead times for that type of work to be fully vetted and designed and built. And so with removing the regional option, there's some potential schedule efficiencies to where if we scale it and we are able to move quickly, that we could even find a path to build this project at the same schedule or even ahead of the original schedule. We also have a great, again, I'll emphasize, an amazing team here at the staff level, our contract, our owner's agent, HDR, has done a phenomenal job. And then, of course, I have to thank Mountain Cascade and Corolo for bringing this critical information to us now, so that we can understand that a decision needs to be made so that we can move forward in a project that is fundable, permissible, and constructable. So that is something to be proud of, that we can use this information to move forward into the next steps. And speaking of which, tonight really is a listening session. I've talked a lot. I'd love to hear back from the community. Our team would love to hear back from the community and the council about this information and the direction that we should follow moving forward. We can continue our collaboration and innovation for revised project options. We received kind of some really good feedback from the Regional Water Quality Control Board today about really presenting some options, about alternatives that a revised project could look like, that we can have some numbers. Who would get served? How many parcels? Where would we treat it? would we treat it, what would we treat it, land application, surface water discharge. We can hone that down into a very digestible manner for us to present back to the town council and to get decisions made and start working on a revised environmental document and continue with design. So with that, future council actions will be to review and accept the project's Basis of Design report early next year and then ultimately, we want to keep the momentum and the energy behind this and the engagement we have from all of our partners to get a revised project decided and find that pathway and move forward, design right away, permit and construction. So I still see a lot of great progress to report. It's obviously not the news that I was hoping to share this year, but we are here and excited to move forward and in positive direction to get this project done. So with that, I'll thank the council for the time and glad to answer any questions. I'll mention again, we have the full team here this evening and look forward to your feedback.
So Mark, I have a question. I think three years ago, two years ago, we received 200 million from HCD for projects which we were to name and they were to okay and what have you, and there was some money in there for sewer. Is there any way to take some of that and reallocate from projects that we had named to put it, put more towards the sewer?
Yeah, so that is something that we could absolutely look at and investigate. To your point, what you're referring to is in 2022, we were allotted about $200 million in CDBGDR infrastructure funds. And of that, we dedicated $16 million towards the sewer project construction phase. The remaining components of that allocation are currently in our action plan and fulfill match requirements on some of our recovery grants and then also provide significant funding to road evacuation improvements. Our community has set forth a lot of priorities for us. And so as we allocated the funds for the sewer and road projects, that was made done in a public process that considered all of our priorities in the situation as it was. And so if we were to look at a request to revise that action plan, what's been great in our experience so far in working with HCD, they've been so receptive into the needs and the dynamic nature of Paradise's recovery that they've been able to be flexible, find pathways to get difficult challenges solved. And so I can't say with 100% certainty, but based on the nature of the funding, if there was a decision or direction given about reprioritizing the universe of recovery and recovery infrastructure projects in the sewer and priorities of the other projects listed, the biggest cost will be not delivering those other projects. And so that'll be a consideration that would have to be made and that's certainly something that we could do in the future if directed.
So if we didn't deliver the other projects, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily mean that those projects are just dead, could we go after other money and grants and what have you for those and what are the likelihood that we would get them?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, for example, we are working on a revised application right now for the Row Road Phase Two allocation. We have a $25 million need on that project which would connect South Libby to Clark Road and complete kind of a funded corridor between Pence and Clark Road for evacuation ingress egress. And so if we were to take funding slated for that project and redirect it to the sewer, we would absolutely still be eligible to apply for other funding sources, whether it be RACE or PROTECT at the federal levels, or there's a different version of the PROTECT program called the LT-CAB, which is Local Transportation Climate Adaptation Program, where there are a few, while they're few and far between and limited funding amounts, there are opportunities to request funds for evacuation route improvements. I just would not have the expectation to achieve the level of funding that's been allocated to the town at this point over the course of a decade, really in amount of what we are currently in charge of administering. But to answer your question in one word, yes, we would be able to, I'm sorry, thank you. But yes, we could, we could reapply in different funding sources, whether or not we'd be awarded. Again, you talk about state and federal priorities, we're not the only community affected by wildfire, we're not the only community recover, in recovery, and we're not the only community that has infrastructure needs. And so those are all challenges we have to deal with.
Well, that was a better answer than the short answer, no. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mark, you've identified six different sewer service areas. Now, it's going to be hard to pick and choose between all of that, so before going down that path, have you thought about looking at all the funding that we have allocated towards us that has not been spent, plus all the possible, the likelies you have there, what your budget could be? You had mentioned a design to budget or design to fund. Have you come up with what that fund could be and would that help us better scope the size of the new sewer service area?
Yeah, I think to date tonight, I don't have that number for you. It's certainly a goal of ours moving forward, to be able to know what the universe is. I think we need to establish the options of what each of those areas or even close and round numbers and scale to understand, okay, this one looks, you know, with some engineering thought and our contractor team, to put some thought into that about what is a realistic expectation for each of those that allow us to align with what we've secured and what we could secure to present back to the council to give you those options.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about, is that each one of those SSAs would have an approximate cost and then you would have your best guess of all the different funding that we could pull, potentially go after, plus what we have allocated towards us that we haven't spent, so that we can make a decision saying, well, if you do all six of them, it blows the budget up. But if you do three of them, and then we have to start working with the town, with the, you know, town members and all that to understand the impact of which threes to pick, how to prioritize that, but we have to fit it within the budget, obviously, we can't blow it up the second time because this, this is, as you pointed out, is a must-build. We have to have a sewer for the town to come back to where it was before. We've got to have it for the downtown and other areas. So I'd like to see something like that.
Understood. Thank you.
It really was. And I think for the public, it really, you know, some of us have been involved with this for a while, so we know what's going on, but a lot of the times the folks don't. I like the idea of doing our own, scaling it down. It seems pretty simple to me. I mean, like that downtown where only 16% of the rebuild has happened, it's because there's no sewer. And there's, and some of those properties, there's no ability to put septic in. But the deal is, with all of the technology that's come out and with all of the, I mean, there's some pretty amazing things that can be done. So I like the idea that you come back with some of that stuff. I really appreciate everybody showing up tonight and caring. I would really like to see us, have you guys, because you just had a meeting with all these different folks today, put together some of these ideas, get together some ballpark numbers, they can be real general ballpark numbers. And let's schedule, like we used to do with the red and green dots, let's schedule a public meeting about the sewer where we can have the time, a couple of hours or whatever it would take, to listen to the public. If you really want to hear, we're not going to do it at eight o'clock tonight till 10 or 11 tonight. I mean, we could.
No, we can't.
Good. Good. You know what I mean? I mean, but that would be my suggestion. I think what you presented with is a realistic thing of what's happening. I think that doing our own is an alternative. I know there's some people in the audience that represent some, have done successful things like this in other communities. I'm real excited about the possibility. And the thing like some of that CDBG money that Steve was talking about, so we committed a bunch of money so that we could make evacuation safer. Here's, here's the Woody Cullerton, oh Greg's not here. If we don't have a population, we don't need the evacuation routes, you know? So if the sewer is the key thing, which it is, to bring in our community back, to getting businesses here and restaurants and things, then we need to divert that money into that. If that is the biggest priority, we can add bike lanes and we can add crosstown evacuation routes and all that stuff. We can do that later as we get the money, but let's get the sewer built. So I appreciate what you've done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mark, I did have one question. I noticed that on the original sewer service area map, it obviously includes the Clark Road corridor and none of the proposed sewer service areas, do they include Clark?
Yeah, so for the sake of discussion, we built this one showing these six, really focusing on the Skyway, building off the downtown. We can absolutely keep the Clark Road corridor, all these colored parcels represent areas that are proposed to be served by the sewer service area and approved in our EIR to be served by the project. But when it comes to looking at a reduced project scale, based on what I've been told and the information and the challenges associated with really getting from Clark to Skyway, especially near, you know, through Pearson and the College Hill area, that there is significant infrastructure going to be required to get the wastewater over to this side of town. And so with that, it comes cost, more collection service area is going to be the higher cost. And so when we talk about the long, you know, short-term expectations, are we thinking about a $50 million total project or 100 or 150? Certainly anything over 150 at this point, based on what I know, is going to be really difficult. Certainly anything over 200 is going to be absolutely very, very, almost close to impossible with what the current climate is. So getting over to Clark within this budget while serving the downtown, it would be really difficult. Now, if for some reason we were to hear a different priority, you know, again, these are, can be moved and parcels could be selected and if the focus was a different area other than what's been shown as a draft starting point, certainly open to listening and taking direction.
But isn't there also the possibility of doing the downtown, the main corridor, the Skyway thing and all that, finding the land and putting, and then taking these properties on Clark? Because we have some like down by, what's it called, you know, behind the bowling alley down there. There's potential to put a smaller system to serve, right? We could have more than one system, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if PID is going to manage these things for us, you know, I was hoping they were going to give us the $400 million. But I'm just saying there's a lot of potential to do some things. It's not like we only got to do it one way, we can only put it in one location.
Yeah, absolutely correct. And I guess if I could put a point on the issue would be is that this is the first of potentially many types of projects that could ultimately serve what we had set out to do from the very beginning.
That's why I think it'd be really good if you guys develop a little bit more, maybe couples, and we invite the public to a special day for that. And in the meantime, make this or whatever else we need to on our website or something so the public can become educated and show up with some real good ideas and what have you. I just think that that's a key thing that we need to do.
Thank you.
And I would support, at this point, while we're still in the research and exploration of what our potential options are that we press forward with and scope the whole thing and break it up into pieces, and then we reach a crossroads where we have to, you know, make, like triage it and decide what we're going to work on first. But I think there would be some logic to continuing to drill down on the entire original proposed scope and, you know, let the community give their feedback on that as well.
Mm-hmm. Open to direction. And so again, to recap, I know if there's public cards we want to get to, but our goal is to listen and take that feedback and keep going.
So cards, Melanie?
Yes. The first card is Bill, is it Sharpetto?
Sherrod.
Sherrod.
Hello. I know most of you board members. I am Bill Sherrod. I've lived here for, since 1974. I was a, I'm a retired business owner for over 40 years. I am on the school board, I've been there for the last six years. I had a lot of things I was going to mention today, but getting the information from this gentleman over here, there's no way that I can address those questions now. I would need to take time to look at what's been presented today, obviously. I do, oh, by the way, Woody, you could come to any school board meeting we have, so it's open to the public, so you don't need to have permission to come. You mentioned you needed permission, you really don't. But yeah, we'd be more than happy to have any representative. I'm going to try to come to all of your meetings from now on as well. One thing that I will mention as a school board member is, we have not waited for you guys just because of, we knew it wouldn't happen in the two years to dig, four years to be complete. We have built one new school, remodeled several schools, redone the high school, we're in the process of starting another school on Pearson Road, which I don't think is in, I have a question. So is the Paradise Elementary School that was there, is that going to be on any of your sewer plans except the first one you proposed?
So I can answer that question. So the original SSA did include Paradise Elementary School and so out of the six that are just again, concept drafts, it did not include service really east of Scottwood at this point.
So no, correct? So as you guys take longer to do these things, it's costing the district more money to develop our properties, to add our schools. We will be adding another school on Pearson Road fairly soon and we will plan on not having your services again. It will cost us money to add, to connect to that project when it's done. We can't wait for you guys. I mean, I don't mean to be rude, I don't mean to be nauseous about it, but I'm extremely disappointed as a citizen and as a former business owner and as a school board member, it has taken six years and we're still no further than we were before. So that's a statement on my personal side. You had mentioned before, when you're talking committees, that there's a sewer committee already, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So do you guys meet regularly? Do you, what's, who's on that committee and what's the plan?
So we had a, there was a sewer stakeholder meeting body that I sat on in 2014, which was before I was on council. When this came to council to a vote in 2019, a sewer committee was formed and it was Jody Jones and myself from Paradise as well as staff. And with Chico, it was Andrew Coolidge and Casey Reynolds. And we met monthly to get the agreement going to collect, to connect to Chico. Once that had happened, no, we didn't have regular meetings. We were, I mean, trust me, you're no more disappointed than we are. You know, it's been a long haul and we were promised, when we initially took the vote, it was to do a sewer system up here. And the water board basically came to us and said, well, you can do what you want, but we're not going to issue a permit for it. We want regionalization. So that's how Chico came involved. So we were just talking now is where we're at now, the sewer committee who right now is Ron Lasana, myself, will definitely be reactivated and getting involved with this again. We pretty well thought we had a done deal. And so that's where we're at and why we're at.
So what we do, what we've done as a school board is two board members have, are on a construction committee, superintendent and CEO, and we meet with the architect and the contractor once a week through Zoom. We get things done. We don't, we push, we push, we push, and Heidi can testify to how much I push and such, but I feel that you guys need to meet bi-weekly, weekly, monthly, whatever you guys need to do. This has taken too long. You guys need to, in my opinion, be more involved, get it pushed, get it done. And if I can do anything as a citizen, not as a board member, but as a citizen, to help with that, I'd be more than happy to do it, but you probably won't like my opinion on it.
Good, thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you. One thing I'd like is, I would like the information from tonight and if it's at all possible, you guys are allowed to get some of this information prior to a meeting, you know, I would like to see that as well posted on your agenda so I can look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second card is by Jared Kramer.
Hi, town council. Luckily, I'm also, it's my first time ever coming to a meeting, very excited. And the sewer project has been a very big part of our cafe, LoFi, since we got going because it's very impactful to our long-term plans for growth in the community. I know I've been asked several times by different Rotary members and different people in the community if we would consider relocating to, can you get the new downtown up on the screen?
Oh, this one?
Yeah. The new downtown. The new downtown section, it's mostly vacant. Is that it? Yeah. That's it. One of the considerations that I have brought up to different Rotary members as well as different people in the community who keep asking it when they suggest me moving there, if the sewer was put in, I'm really concerned about parking in that area right now. Anyone in the Knicks in the evening can see what that kind of impact has and on a restaurant of scale that I'd be looking to hopefully, hopefully invest and bring to the community like we have over on Clark, what that would mean to that downtown area. So I don't know if it's like reallocating parts of property, but with sewer, of course, it's going to bring in more commercial business to that district. What does that look like for the viability of customers and the flow of people coming in and out? That has me really concerned when I'm looking at the long-term growth of not only cafe, tax revenues, and as well as like location in town. So something I just want to bring up too, I don't know if it's that team over there to think about, your guys' team, but that's something kind of big on my mind. I'd love to add additional locations. I'd love to add additional spaces as far as culinary program that we're currently working on with the high school. It's exciting. We actually have our first intern from the high school at LoFi that we're training. We'd like to expand that. All those capabilities are going to be impactful when it comes to thinking that kind of planning as well. So I don't know which section, you know, we may or may not, and this is in the early phases, but just something to think about, especially for that downtown space, if it is supposed to be a commercial space, that I haven't heard anyone talk about because there really doesn't seem to be enough parking down there. Thank you.
Next card for John Ramaya.
Good evening, counsel. About a third of a century ago, in this very same room, we found a council recalled over, well, through a vote, but recalled over a sewer system in this town. The biggest thing that I got to look at right now is the federal government is trillions of dollars in debt, the state is billions of dollars in debt. As I see from these numbers up here in my head, about, even though it goes through the state, 75% of this money is coming from the feds. And we're going to see, I don't know what's going to happen, but in the next six months, something's going to happen in allocations and budgets by the federal government. I think we need to look at what that's doing before we throw any more money at this to see if we're going to have the money. We listened to regional water promises. Oh, if you run the line, and council at that time, if it wasn't for regional water, would have decided to do it locally. But we, we listened to regional water's promise to, oh, you run it to Chico and we're going to fund it. Guess what? We're taking these same people's advice again. We need to sit back for six months and see what's going to happen with the economy and then consider spending some money. Because right now, everything is in a big, I don't know what you'd even call it, lack of a better term, shit show. And we can't, we can't afford to throw any more money at it. And the last thing I want to see is the, the money we got from PG&E be thrown at the sewer just to be told again, you know, you can't do it. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
Comments from the council?
Mark, do you have clear guidance on what we want to see back in the next year? I mean, and do you have an idea of a schedule of any sort?
Yeah, absolutely. So at this point, I heard a couple of comments be made about looking at the potential for other funds to be allocated away from road projects to the sewer. That's certainly something we can look at. I've heard direction on providing alternatives and options for the council to consider. I heard a request for community engagement in that process of how we scoop, or scope and scale the potential revised project, and that's something we are planning on doing. And we can absolutely do those items moving forward. Our goal is to bring the BODR for review early next year, and we'll look at maybe if that needs to be a special meeting to have more time to dedicate to that technical conversation, especially as we focus on the key critical components that are going to be applicable to a revised project about the collection system. And then obviously looking for future council action to make a decision and give direction on an alternative to advance move forward into revising environmental analysis and, and design. So I would forecast those items to occur in January, February, and March, if I'm looking at everything I just discussed.
One, one other thing, Mark, that I would like to see in our next round of information is if we could drill down to a point for the public on a commercial and/or residential level, what that looks like for them. You know, what it would cost for tie-in, what it would, you know, projections, obviously, but depending on which direction we move, if, especially when they're giving feedback, how much is that going to cost for ongoing maintenance or, you know, that sort of thing?
I'd, I'd love to be able to provide that. The biggest piece on why we haven't been able to do that to date is the uncertainty in construction funding. And so until we have a plan secured to fund the capital upfront costs and we're just purely making decisions and establishing a rate structure on operations and maintenance, or even if we look at a district again, we're not going to have additional information about what it looks like on the per parcel O and M side because we, we really don't want to build a model based on loans or financing at this point. And so I'd love to be able to provide that. I just, in that timeline I just mentioned, I don't think I'm going to be able to with what we know.
Okay, so before we, before we solicit for the, the public's feedback and before we make a direction, a decision on what direction to go, we couldn't even define a worst-case scenario so that we would know if it was even feasible for them?
Well, at this point, what I can say is that we, the council has taken action to try and come up with a plan to keep rates in the range of $80 a month, but we didn't have a rate structure about, you know, what it would be for a high-end user, you know, say a restaurant versus a low-end user, a single family, you know, ADU or something like that. So that, those decisions really hinge on having a fully funded construction project and establishing who would connect. One thing that's, you know, very, very clear to me is when you look at this map and you look at all of the red parcels, that there is not a concentrated area for us to serve that is a bunch of, of parcels that are ready to build, have that economy of scale, and we can establish a very traditional rate structure. And so I, I want to provide that information as soon as we can. We will absolutely keep that in mind as, as, as we go forward to try and get that information out as soon as we know it.
One more last thing from me, Mark. On your current work, make sure whatever we're spending our money on, that none of it's throwaway anymore. So in other words, anything that has to do with this, past the system, the $400 million system, don't spend it, don't run it unless it's stuff that's portable that can move over to the scale system.
Absolutely. We take this very, very seriously, and we are working through our contracts and with our team to pivot quickly. And certainly our goal is to not expend any future funds on, you know, for example, the, the export pipeline design. So.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
So item 6C, consider approving the attached professional services agreement and authorize the town manager to execute the following contract with Warner Enterprises.
Mr. Mayor, this is, we need to continue this item to a future council meeting.
Okay.
We have received requests from, or we've received information from two of the non-successful bidders that they intend to file a bid protest, and the timeline for them to file that has not yet expired, which means we can't award the contract until that timeline does expire.
So bring it back in?
Likely January.
Okay. So 6C will move to January. Okay, with that, council-initiated items and reports. Council-initiated agenda items, and that's your?
Yeah, I would like to, to add to the next agenda or an upcoming agenda to consider a PUSD committee with representatives, and also to redefine the scope of the sewer committee so that it doesn't just indicate a, it looks like a regionalization committee, so that it's just a general sewer committee. Because that makes it sound like it's a limited scope. Like you said, it just was, it just ended when we, yeah.
Change the scope of it.
Okay.
It's two items.
Anybody else? Council reports on committee representation, and you do have one, so I'm going to let you, I'm going to start with you, Heidi.
Oh, about my little trip to Sacramento?
Yes.
I had the opportunity to go down and attend an event to recognize Assemblyman Gallagher and his swearing in for his, his sixth term. And it was really, it was really kind of fun. Lori joined me and we, we met all kinds of people. It was, it was exciting. I had a great time.
Greg?
I had LFO this, this month. Nothing to report to us. You know, again, Tuscan right down the hill is moving forward, so again, that's something that might come on our radar in the future. Hopefully not, but we'll see. Went to the Habitat for Humanity ribbon cutting, that was fun. Three houses, could see those families, that was a great time. And there was something else, other things, but anyway, that's, that's all I talked about.
Swearing in?
Oh, yes, swearing in. I tried wearing swearing in yesterday. That was really, that was really good. No memory, yeah, yeah, that was really good.
You've slept since then.
Yeah. We had three of them just sworn in at one time, that was fun, so.
Ron?
Yeah. I met with the insurance commissioner, Laurel, here in Town Hall and then went on a tour with him. That was a real good discussion about his cash dropping modeling plan that he's rolling out this month that should help with making insurance more available and more affordable. We also had the president and COO of Mercury Insurance there, and they had indicated that they're planning on insuring, at that time they said 100 properties up here, taking them off the California Fair Plan. Later on, when I talked with them, when he came back the second time, he actually indicated they bumped that number up to 240 properties that they're planning on insuring and taking. Now, those are the wildfire prepared homes, the ones that are built to the latest standards that you all put in place a couple of years back. And when they're built to those standards, they, they feel very comfortable that the risk is reduced. They added to that, all the folks that were around us the whole time during both tours, added the fact that what the town council's done with all the changes in the ordinances that we have for how to rebuild a house, as well as what the PRPD is planning on doing and all the other things that's gone into play to reduce the risk, that they feel like we are the leader in a wildfire-prepared community in the nation, and we're being used as a model to other communities when the insurance people are talking to them. So felt real comfortable about the fact that you guys have planned way ahead of time what we needed to do to get prepared and the fact that the community is responding to all that. So looks promising. But I keep telling people that it took a number of years to get in this hole, it's going to take a number of years to get out of this hole. It won't happen overnight. On the 14th of November, I went to the TB, the Tourism Business Improvement District meeting. Nothing exciting came out of that one. There was just a bunch of discussions about the use of their vehicles and things of that nature. Went to the Verizon ribbon cutting, another business that's opened up, up in there, where Save Mart is in that closet over there. Obviously, on the 18th, we had a healthcare committee meeting you and I attended, making progress on the, the information out to the folks that are doing the study. We're hoping to get the study back next springtime sometime, don't have a specific date on that. That will tell us what the capabilities are on the ridge and what the needs are, specifically the needs, needs in the current time and needs going forward in the future. We're planning on using that to talk with other healthcare providers and say, can you support us in these particular needs? We can ask to have facts to back it up. Hopefully that's what we'll have out of that. Was that a Heart-to-Hart ribbon cutting? No, that is a real estate agency, and it was a real interesting meeting and all that. Lots of good people there, very excited, lots of energy. Then on December 13th, ended, I attended the Butte County Disaster Council, and finally the December 7th, had the Habitat for Humanity ribbon cutting, three homes. Two of them are currently occupied, the third one is just about done, it's got a little bit more, so we got homes coming back and it's just really good to see. That's it for me.
Winnie?
Well, I just hung out at the Consortium for Care all month. No, I got to go to the insurance commissioner meeting. That was, I thought that was really good, you know, whether or not his ideas come about, but it was really great to see that there are insurance companies starting to write homeowners insurance again. I did ask his worker, why don't you just have wildfire insurance like earthquake insurance and let us just get, but they couldn't answer that, so. And that's it. That's all I did this month because I've been busy with the California Valet Nutcracker production.
Well, my, my biggest thing I did last month was I went to Washington DC to lobby for HR 5863, which is great that it finally passed. Long, long overdue. I've had several calls from individuals that are saying, well, when's the president going to sign it? Well, we're hoping this week. There is no opposition from the White House on signing it. If for whatever reason he didn't sign it, after 10 days, it becomes a law anyway. So either way, we're, we're about done. Ron kind of covered the healthcare committee, we're both on that. So the, the, the biggest idea out of that is next spring is going to give us a hard copy of a document to pursue, whether it be Adventist Health or another healthcare provider, to come up and, and give us the healthcare, hopefully, that we, we need on the, on the ridge, or at least identify what we can support and what we need, and it'll, it'll give us a great starting point. I've spent the last few days giving several news interviews about the DC trip. I had, I had the honor and privilege to sit on a police department committee as a, as a citizen, the selection of our new lieutenant. We have one of our lieutenants who's retiring, so we're searching for another one, and our, our chief is doing a, doing a great job with that, and I appreciate being included in that. Every year, Fire Safe Council has a, about a half-day yearly summit on what, what was accomplished in the previous year and what's going to be a, a priority for the coming year. I attended that again. They, they did a lot of great work last year and have some great projects going for this year. And then yesterday, as Greg said, we, we swore in two new police officers and one chaplain. Great to see our staffing levels. We've got a, a great young police department. Really, really great, and while you heard some of it tonight with, with the chief's sayings, and that was basically what I've done. So from there, we, future agenda items we've got, so town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just mention that, you know, several things that have already been commented on by council members, the insurance commissioners' visit, meeting with our Strategic Healthcare Recovery Plan consultants, sat in on a couple of those interviews with individuals. It was great to do, participate in the swearing in of our two young officers and our new chaplain. Anybody in the faith community, I know the, the chief would love to hear from people who would be interested in volunteering and becoming part of that chaplain program, so if you know somebody, I know the chief would love to hear, you know, about that. And then again, participated in the sewer project workshop today and then the chamber annual dinner last Thursday night. Thank you.